I'm going to call the March 23rd, 2022 Planning Commission Work Session to order. Heather, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Hamilton.
Here.
Mr. Cale.
Here.
Mr. Tarly.
Here.
Mr. Boswell.
Here.
Mr. Granger.
Here.
Mr. Salkolowski.
Here.
Sliebel.
Here.
Thank you. It's great that we are all together in the same place at the same time. Hasn't been that way for a while. We're unmasked and smiling, and that's all good. And I want to make one point about this work session. This is the second work session we've had in three months. I want to make the point that I don't intend to have work sessions every other month. Mr. Granger and I suffered through work sessions every month for three years while we were working on the Comprehensive Plan. Going forward, I hope we're going to have a little break from that. But today's work session, I think, is very important because it deals with affordable housing. And we're going to have a presentation from Mr. Trivett on the Affordable Housing Work Group Report. And I think as he speaks, you'll see several issues that are going to be coming before us probably this year. So, Mr. Trivett, the floor is yours.
Here. All right. Yeah, so we thought we'd talk about affordable housing today. And so I've put together sort of a compilation of slides. You have the report, I think, was sent to you in advance. And today, I just put together some of the slides from the various presentations that we actually used in the work group so that you could get a flavor of how we arrived at the report before we dig into that. So we'll start with that content first. So you've seen this already. If you've looked at the report, this is just a list of the members. And I put it in here because I wanted to impress upon you. This is a list of people that know housing. A pretty substantial effort by the members to be at all of these meetings, which were, for the most part, longer than two hours every single one. And that was partly my fault, but also because they were very engaged in the topic. They always had more to talk about and a lot more questions than we probably anticipated going into the discussions. And then a whole host of staff involved in housing from the city side. So we felt like we had all the resources that were needed to really talk about what is a very difficult problem to address. So this is the meeting schedule. This shows you where we ended up. This is not where we started in terms of our plan. But we had our orientation meeting in February and moved right through a series of meetings and finished up in October. This initiative was born out of the city strategic planning process that we do every two years, the GIOs. The city council wanted us to address affordable housing, but we didn't really have a lot of good strategies. And we knew that we wanted to involve experts in the field to come up with a good list that then could come back to city council for consideration and implementation. And so that's sort of the flow. And the current GIOs actually have a couple of work groups designed to do just that. And I think that one of the things that we, the staff, have not done a good job of impressing upon the city council is it's a very small staff in the city of Williamsburg. And so it's the same list of staff members on many of those same projects. And so we can't go from the work group finishing the job directly to implementation because we have to go to the next work group and finish that work. And so there is a break in time in terms of implementing the strategies. So with that in mind, these meetings were designed to sort of get us through the topic and generate the final report. So we started with orientation. And at the orientation meeting, what we do is we provide sort of a background of information, most of which the Planning Commission already has under your belt, right? We talk about current zoning. We talk about all the current tools. We talk about where the deficiencies might be. We had Dr. Stafford come and give an update on the then-current housing report. We showed some examples of what we might do in terms of initiatives and concepts. I think I even showed a video at one point during the orientation to sort of get them excited about the concepts that were coming. From there, we moved into what we thought was the biggest next step. And that was sort of setting definitions for what is affordable housing in Williamsburg. Because communities can define affordable housing any way that's appropriate to them, right? Housing and urban development at the federal level sets their, the federal standards for affordable housing. But we don't have to abide by those unless we're applying for funding. And even if we do apply for funding, we can still set thresholds for affordability that exceed those limits and address them locally. And I think that, for me, having worked in a lot of different localities, that's been really impressed upon me is affordability is a moving target from community to community. It's really determined by the working conditions and the housing climate in the community. So from there, we moved into talking about concepts. And so I'm going to talk to you about how we did that. It took us three meetings to work our way through the concepts. I think you'll see why as I show you the next few slides. The way that we looked at concepts was we looked at some good example plans from across the state. And then we also talked about staff ideas based on our expertise. We talked about concepts that reported out of the Neighborhood Balance Committee that were affordable housing-centered. And then we talked about any ideas that the group themselves brought to the meetings. And then from there, we went through a ranking process to develop the final report, had a couple of meetings to talk about getting the report into a format that they liked, and then delivered the product to the city council. So this is a little bit more about how we did the process of coming up with the concepts. So there were three major plans that we looked at. The first one was the city of Alexandria. And we asked these same questions of the group for each of the plans. So if you ever get the pleasure of serving on a work group that I am in charge of, I'm very prone to handing out homework. So you should know that going in, so that if you get the invitation, you can decide to decline. So very often, I will assign homework between meetings because we've got a lot to do and a short time to do it in. And so one of the homework pieces was look at these plans and answer these questions. Come back to the meeting prepared to sort of discuss it. What I want you to notice about this is we weren't just looking for concepts to pull out of these plans. We were looking for plan design. What were the sort of major components of the plan that made them work or didn't work so that we could include the best practices and avoid the worst ones? And I really think it produced a good product. So Alexandria was the first one we looked at. Over here in the corner, you can see just a little note from their plan. By 2030, a deficit of 14,687 affordable housing units are needed in the city of Alexandria. That's important. We're going to come back to that in a minute. Next, we looked at the city of Charlottesville. I picked the city of Charlottesville as an example because they had just finished this plan. And they had hired a major consultant in the planning world to do it and paid a lot of money for it. And immediately, it was incredibly controversial. I'm not 100% sure that it's still been adopted. But what I did like is it gave us some really solid examples for plan design. And if you get the chance, pull it up, take a look at it. It's really well-constructed in terms of how they laid it out. And it gave us some great ideas about elements of our report that we wanted to sort of mirror in a different style. And that's sort of how our report came together. A lot of good concepts came out of this that were included for discussion. Some of them made it into the recommendations today. And then this is Fairfax County. And we included this plan because we really wanted to look at a highly urbanized area plan. So when you think about affordable housing, Fairfax County arguably at the forefront in the city, in the state of Virginia because they were one of the implementers of inclusionary zoning and really at the beginning stages of fighting with state legislators over the need for the ability for localities to put that in as a requirement in their zoning ordinances. But you can see, they still have a considerable problem. 27,670 affordable units needed in the county of Fairfax. So that's a pretty big order in terms of development, even in an area that's got a lot of development potential. The other thing that I would point out is if you look at this plan, it's interesting because it's exceptionally boring. And that's another reason I included it, because we showed you two plans. One done sort of late 80s, early 90s, and you can see that in the design. One done now, very graphically oriented, pulls you in, you want to read it, it's easy to get through. And here is the old 1970s classic government plan that no one reads. And we knew we wanted to avoid that. And so I really wanted the committee to get a flavor for what we didn't want to do. All right, so that produced this list of ideas. And you can see here, it's a very long list of concepts and strategies to deal with affordable housing. Some are easily translatable to another locality, and some are not. The highlight just means that they duplicate somewhere in the other lists. You can see all the way over here on the right of that is the Neighborhood Balance Concepts. And then underneath that are the staff suggestions that made it to the table. So this is the complete list of ideas that the Affordable Housing Work Group waded through and ultimately narrowed down. And you can see at the top, building a top 10 list. So we went into this thinking we were going to build 10 recommendations. That's not how it ended up working out at the request of the work group. So now let's talk about the product. So this is the product. And, you know, one of the things that is, I mean, I'm free to admit, it's a learning process for us. The city has not used a lot of work groups in the past. And so as we do them, we learn what works and what doesn't work for us. So Neighborhood Balance, I will say, a criticism of mine, was we didn't produce a report at the end. You know, we did a PowerPoint presentation, exceptionally long, lots of information. And it would have been much more helpful, I think, to the city council and to the community if we had prepared sort of a concise, explicit report on how to do, what to do, and when. And so we learned that lesson. And that's really what drove the need for what I think is a very attractive, easy-to-read report on a very complicated topic. So with that, we come to the welcome screen. And just a couple of things that I would point out about this page of the report, which most people would blow right by, is it was really important for me to point out that we're calling this, the people who read this report, users, and the content's a toolkit. Because this is intended to be put into action, right? This is not a series of recommendations to be ignored. So that was very important to us on how we were designing what we were doing. Next is some of the information we've already covered, a little bit of background so that you can see where we got, how we got to where we did, the work group members. And then on the right begins sort of the work. So as I said, one of the first things that we did was we tried to identify what our concept of affordability in the city was. And so we talked about income categories. And you can see there is a list. The ultimate decision of the work group was, I really thought going into it, that the work group would decide, we're going to focus on this category. And we're going to look for strategies that address that category of need. And they didn't want to do that. What they said was, we really need to look at the whole picture and identify strategies that address comprehensively the affordable housing issue. And in the end, I'm really glad that we did. Because that process of talking about what the targets needed to be led us to the conclusion that a very first step needed to be a revision of the housing report that Dr. Stafford had done a few years ago. It wasn't that old, certainly by government standards, but we really needed a much better picture. But the other thing that we noticed was that every single one of those successful plans that we studied had very explicit targets for housing unit need, both currently and forecasted by some development horizon. I know a traditional comprehensive planning horizon of 10 to 20 years, right? So we didn't have that in the existing report. So when we contracted Dr. Stafford, who participated in the work group, to revise her study, we said, the end result has to include these targets. And that was something she had never done before. So we worked with her to develop a process for estimating need using Weldon Cooper projections for what our population would be, and then making some assumptions about what the current community climate is and how that translates to 2040. And so that really drove some of these calculations. So what you've got there is sort of an introduction to the new study. And then on the right of this page is sort of the meat out of that study that helps drive the thought process on which strategies are better than others for implementation. And so at the bottom is really the most important part. So you have these two categories. You've got current affordable housing demand, and then you've got affordable housing demand in 2040. And I think for most of our members, this was a surprising outcome. Because when you look at that first column of current, I think a lot of people expected there to be need in the very low and low-income categories. And so people were surprised when that wasn't the case. I think everyone expected there to be need at extremely low. I don't know that people expected there to be need at moderate 2, moderate 3, and other households. Because that's fairly high earners, especially when you get to that other household category. I mean, that's over $500,000 in house price. But what was interesting about this is this doesn't say that there's not need, really, in those other categories. Because what happens, and we couldn't figure out a good way to represent this graphically, so it's in the text. But what happens is because there's not availability and there's extreme demand at both ends of this, those people are buying up the chain and down the chain and squeezing out the moderate availability that exists between demand and supply in those other categories. And so the message there is that when you talk about dealing with affordable housing in Williamsburg, you really do have to talk about the whole spectrum. You can't just focus on one income category and expect it to really make a solid difference. So that early decision by the work group to look at all the categories really proved to be very insightful. And we do have both reports in full, if the Planning Commission would like to read them. The first report deals with just the city of Williamsburg. But we also asked her to do a regional report that looked at James City County, York County, and Williamsburg. And it's sort of interesting to see how the two parallel each other. The reason that we did that was because James City County has just completed, when we started this process, they had just completed their study with their recommendations. And so we wanted to sort of update all of the information at the same time. We did have members of the work group that were staff members in York County and James City County so that we could bring all that information together.
Excuse me, are those on the website?
I don't know if they're on the website or not, but they can be, so. The regional report, yeah.
That would be helpful.
Sure. Lot of good information in there. I could talk about this longer than you all probably want me to. But at the bottom of this page is another sort of hidden strategy in how I wanted to put the report together. So this quote, "Less than 10% of people who work in the city actually live in the city." And one of the things that the work group said when we showed them the draft of this was, you need to put context with that quote. Is that a good thing or a bad thing? And I said, no, we don't want to do that because we want everybody to draw their own conclusions. And depending on your perspective, it's a good thing or it's a bad thing, right? If you are economic development-minded, that's not a bad thing. You've got a lot of people driving into the city, you've got a lot of daily shoppers, a lot of turnover, that's a good thing. If you are affordable housing-minded, that's a very bad indicator. So that leads us to what we decided. And what the group wanted to do was take that incredibly long list of ideas and narrow it down. And we couldn't get to 10. We tried to encourage them to do that, but we landed on 13. And the way that we did that was we use a survey tool, and everybody ranks their concepts, right? So we put all 13, I can't remember, did we put them all out there? I can't remember if we put them all on the list or not. But anyway, they dragged these ideas into the rank that they liked them. So you're really getting two pieces of information from that. Number one, I like these ideas generally, regardless of the order. And number two, of the ideas that I like, I like these the best, right? And so that's what this shows you, is the compilation of those two data points. These are the ideas that the work group liked the best, and they liked them the best in this order. Now that becomes important because on the left of this page, you have the five ideas that got more than 50% of the vote from the work group, which means these are the ideas they felt most passionate about. And then on the right are equally good concepts for dealing with affordable housing. It's just that this work group, for whatever sets of reasons, it could have been time to implementation, it could have been the number of units that resulted from the idea, it could have been the difficulties of implementing them, ranked them lower in the list. And so what this report does is it focuses on those five ideas that really got the most support and also tells you what the other eight concepts were so that they don't get lost. And the message here isn't only do the five. The message here is you really need to consider all 13. And as circumstances change, the environment changes around us, maybe one of those six through 13 actually rises to the top, and we decide to do that earlier. So I think that's an important point. So then let's move through these five. The first one is hotel-to-affordable-housing conversion. So in this one, you all should be very familiar with this. This is an existing piece of city code where we allow an existing hotel that maybe is underperforming in its revenue, and the owner wants to transition to some other use or wants to sell it to somebody who will transition it to another use. And so we allowed for a period of time a number of units to be converted in that fashion. It was a pretty small number, can't remember the total. They're almost all used up now. I think there might be two left that are available. And so the idea here was, we need to go in and expand that. It worked in the two locations that we've used this. It's worked. There's affordable housing there now. And we need to add units to that. But at the same time, if you read this, and then I'm going to talk about the design of these pages, there are recommendations for how to improve the program generally, right? So one of the weaknesses of the program was there wasn't really any, for lack of a better expression, teeth on maintaining the units that were converted as affordable. There were, we want you to do this, you have to turn in a report, but there's no process of ensuring that in a legal mechanism that those units remain affordable, transitioning year after year after year. It's sort of a good-faith promise by that owner. And so that's a flaw in the plan. Also, there's really not a way, currently in the ordinance, there's not a great way of addressing the level of affordability or the mix of incomes or the style of units that needs to be created. And all of those things, the work group felt like in a revised ordinance, needed to be at least talked about. So in this particular concept, we asked the planning department to look at what properties might qualify and ask them to suspend consideration of which properties are good candidates. So the number you have here is 843. So that's the number of units in the city that are currently in a housing, in a hotel that we felt like would be good candidates for conversion from a revenue performance type of perspective. It does not in any way address, is it a good idea for that property to convert? And what I mean by that is really sort of the challenge list on this page. Number one, and most important about this particular program, is the loss of commercial property. You know, in a city our size, nine and a half square miles, with no way to grow that any further, loss of commercial property is a serious thing. And when you convert a commercial property to residential, it never comes back. So that just needs to be something that's considered. One of the recommendations, and I think you'll see it here, is that this is not a recommendation that we just put 843 in the number inside the city code, but rather we decide to do that in a series of phases so that we can monitor how the conversion is going. Did the changes that we made to the ordinance work to address the issues we were concerned about? Not all at one time. I think that would be a serious mistake. So just for a minute, let's pause and talk about the orientation of these pages. Each one of the five concepts are designed in the same way. These were the good-style sort of mechanisms that we pulled out of those other plans. On the left, you've sort of got the description of what is the idea. Underneath that is a brief description of how we would deploy that plan in Williamsburg. And then on the right is a discussion of what does implementation require? What's the anticipated impact with estimated unit creation and preservation numbers? You've got, how long does it take us to do this? And then underneath, at the bottom, are the challenges. And that's certainly not a complete list of challenges. It's just the ones that we think the community should be aware of as we move into these ideas. So in this particular instance, if we went to the fullest extent of the concept, we could convert 843 units to affordable housing. And if we did it in a prudent way, we could probably create 843 units of mixed-income affordable housing that would be required to stay affordable for some period of time. One thing that I think you don't want to do is create a situation where they are affordable in perpetuity. Because that limits redevelopment opportunity. And ultimately, what happens is you reach the end of life for the last remodel, and there's no vehicle to do it again. And so then the property transitions from viable affordable housing to a blighted property that's a problem. And so the point is, there's a lot of pitfalls that we have to be mindful of before we just plunge headlong into what seems like a great idea. All right, so triangle redevelopment, let me go back. So the pre-work on this page is 90 days. We've already started the pre-work in the planning department. So we're into that planning period of developing what that ordinance needs to look like. And as Mr. Boswell said, this one is coming back to you very likely before the end of the calendar year to start working on your version of what that ordinance needs to be. And when it comes back, it's my hope, and I'm sure it's Aaron's hope, that you'll be mindful of the challenges and those pitfalls and present an ordinance that's addressed much of that, or as much of it as we can, for city council to consider. So then we come to number two, triangle redevelopment. And in this one, I mean, this should not be a surprise to you. It's in the city CIP. It's something that we've been talking about for years. The blatant building is at end-of-life. It's an affordable housing property owned by the Williamsburg Housing and Redevelopment Authority and needs to be redeveloped. There's property to do that on-site. And so we showed the work group some very conceptual drawings of what could be to just give them the flavor of what's possible. And you can see it there in that drawing. You've got a new blatant building here in this corner along the property line, and then a possibility for some mixed-use development on the corner and other uses on the property. And the reason that's important is because this is an expensive project. And it's that piece that might be attractive to a private developer that helps fund the blatant building redevelopment. So that's how that gets linked together. The trouble that we have, and this is actually a topic that we've been talking about with the Housing Authority Board and the city council, is this building has HUD funding involved in it, which brings with it a whole host of restrictions and considerations and timelines that are very hard to navigate. And so, you know, one of the interesting things about the HUD rules is we can redevelop this building as long as they approve the plan, but we can't add any more units to it. And so even though there's room on the property to build a bigger building and have more affordable units, it can't be in the same building. And that's just a weird HUD nuance. Even though we could separate them in some physical way, they still can't be in the same physical space. So this building here on the corner gives you the opportunity to maybe add some affordable units in a different way without those HUD restrictions. And so really, we think this development on the front moves this faster than if we were just doing that project alone because we would have to rely on HUD and their approval process. So on this one, what we're talking about is implementation. We put five years for the pre-work, and that's probably, I mean, that's predicated on a private investor helping us get to completion and also a very willing HUD in terms of approving whatever plan we might propose. One of the advantages to this particular plan is that when you talk about demolishing and rebuilding a housing development that's got HUD involvement, there's a series of criteria that they rank your new plan on. And that criteria is heavily weighted on wherever you're moving that unit to, does it have the same level of service from the community that it had where it was? And that's to guard against, we're going to move this low-value property out to low-value property and turn a high-value property into high-value property. And that's exactly what that's for. And so the concept of reusing this property in this way and going higher density helps us in that it's going to score almost identical to the way it did before. And so I think there is a possibility to navigate HUD a little faster, but it will be frustrating getting there. So five years is probably optimistic on the approval process. Impact of seven, accounting for construction. Anticipated impact, you know, it's hard to estimate because we don't know what a developer might propose for this corner space. We don't know exactly what the configuration of the HUD-allowed blatant redevelopment might be. So we estimate 200. There's an existing 34 units in the blatant building, so they would be preserved. And so that's how that number is arrived at. The challenges are pretty clear. Will we have the money to do it? You know, the Housing Authority has to play a significant role in that. Will they have the money to do it? Adjacent properties, you know, you've got adjacent property owners that are very accustomed to a very large backyard, and they're probably not going to love the idea of losing that, even though it's not theirs. HUD approval, as I said, and then finding that development partner that's willing to proceed, given the constraints on the property. And then community acceptance, you know, we're a community that likes things to be the way they have been, and this is pretty significant change. Number three is one that I particularly like a lot. This is workforce housing at Waller Mill. So if you've lived in the city any time at all, you know that the city's reservoir is out at Waller Mill, and it supplies all of our drinking water. So for a very long time, the city council has been committed to buying property along the waterfront to preserve the water quality. And the reason we do that is just so that we don't get anoxis use in neighboring York County where all of this property is located that would make it harder for us to treat the water so that we can drink it. And that's resulted in us owning a considerable amount of land around the reservoir. And we have not traditionally talked about doing any style of development because of that water quality issue. But in the case of affordable housing, we have learned some interesting lessons. Number one is that already we have transitioned this existing city's sort of unknown affordable housing, workforce housing program. The city for a long time has owned some units. The city for a long time has owned some units that we traditionally rent to ha, to city employees, primarily those that are on call in public works, so that they are closer to the city, and they can report when there's a problem with water and sewer, or what have you. We transitioned that a couple of years ago now, I think, Tyrone, so that the program is not managed by the Public Works Department anymore, and now is managed by the Housing Authority, and they're doing a splendid job. They rewrote the rules, they put in some requirements. One of those requirements is that you have to transition out, you can't live in this housing the entire time you're an employee. And what's been fascinating for me, as the city manager, has been the impact of that, and the, the way that that has driven interest. So just yesterday, an employee came up to see me in the office ecstatic because they just graduated out. And they graduated out because our program allows them to save the money necessary to buy a piece of property, and in this case, build their own home out in the county. And so he moved into his new place, he turned in his keys, and I don't know that I've ever met somebody happier than he is. So it's a great story. Another example that makes me very proud is, in a recent recruitment effort for a public works position, we hired a guy, and, and one of the things that we do is all the new employees have to come and meet with me, and we talk about goals and objectives, and what really drives the city. And in that meeting, I often say, what brought you to Williamsburg? And in this guy's case, he was in another locality, pretty far away, with a higher-paying job. So I was really interested in why he decided to take a pay cut and come to Williamsburg to do something completely different than he's ever done before. And his answer was, it's real easy. I want to live in one of those affordable housing units. Because where I live, I'm spending so much money on housing, and driving to work every day, doesn't make any sense. We did the math, this is much better, it's a career, and you obviously value your employees. And I was like, that's a great story too. So, that's really informed this recommendation. So the idea here is, with all of that background, is there a way to take that dormant property and use it to build some additional workforce housing to help out on that city employee, teacher, police officer, frontline-type stuff? Or affordable housing? And there's plenty of affordable housing needs that go way beyond just income requirements that housing, or that the Human Services Department would love to see us do. And so I asked the planning department to do another exercise. I said, look at all that property, and tell me how many units we could build on each one, if we were only building what is currently allowed by the York County zoning, right? Because if you're following regional politics, you know that York County is currently in a no-growth mode, particularly in the upper county. And so I knew we would have very little success at getting affordable housing approved at anything other than what's allowed as of right. And then I said, we need to look for a housing model that is low-impact. And that's what we've done. So what's proposed here is, we could build thirty-five units on these properties you see shown in blue on the map, using this low-impact design, you know, it's going to have solar panels, it's not going to have composting toilets, because, you know, it's got to be comfortable. But we're going to use a lot of green building technologies to loot lower cost, it's going to be terrain-based design, so we're not going to do a tremendous amount of grading, and it's going to fit right into the space. And because of all those things, we don't really have to worry about the impact of a very small number of houses that will be very spread out over a lot of pieces of property, impacting water quality. In addition to that, we would expect that city employees, if that's who ends up getting placed here, are going to be excellent stewards. And if they're not city employees, and they're in some other housing program that Human Services is working on, they're going to have a lot of support to make sure that they're operating the house and living in the right way, so that it's not a factor for water quality. So to me, this is an exciting opportunity. Pre-work is two years, and that's primarily looking for the funding, since we already own the land, and it's zoning-appropriate, we could move pretty quickly if we had the funding. Impact in five, because we've got to build them, we've got to put the program together, and find people that want to move out there. Anticipated impact, as I said, it's not a lot of units, thirty-five, and that's really, if you were thinking, thinking about the drawbacks of this idea, it's expensive, and it's not a lot of units. But the individual impact could be tremendous. And what's important about this one, is if you think about those target areas, this has the potential to address the ones at the very low sector. People that really can't afford anything else. This is the potential, because it's heavily government subsidized. There's no revenue model here. In a revenue-driven model to affordable housing, those very low sectors are never going to get addressed, because they can't cash flow. All right, so then the challenges, as I've alluded to already, funding, and funding again, we would ask, if we did do this, we would certainly ask our partner, the Housing Authority, to manage these properties, and the way that they're doing so already. Again, you've got adjacent property acceptance issues, even though we're talking about a small number, we probably could expect York County not to love this idea. Finding a development partner, somebody who's willing to build the houses, that's particularly true if we decide not to a hundred percent fund construction. I think if we were able to a hundred percent fund construction, that's a very easy op, opportunity. And then York County, specifically the government's objections to what is, you know, a, a regional issue, right? Because you have to be aware of how people are going to feel about what you're proposing. And so in this particular instance, if I'm a York County Board of Supervisors member, or a York County administrator, this very much feels like, oh, okay, so the city of Williamsburg wants to address its affordable housing by building affordable housing inside York County. And now I've got kids in my school system, I've got all those impacts, and is that really an appropriate thing to have happen? So, we would need to work through all of that, in terms of making sure that our neighbors felt good about what we're proposing. Number four, mixed-income, mixed-use plan. So in this one, I think what we recognize is the opportunity to have more than one floor of development, and the upstairs residential mixture of what could be. So the idea here is, the, the work group really liked the thought of, Capital Landing Road is, is very much right for redevelopment. There's so much planned that's going to drive that. The redevelopment of the corridor, we have six and a half million dollars planned for that process, it's already in design, the sports complex idea that's moving forward, whole host of other things that are going to really apply pressure to those existing properties, which are right for redevelopment, to redevelop. And the opportunity then is to require mixed-income, mixed-use, a two-story design, addresses potentially affordable housing in that second-story residential piece. So in this one, very easy to, to implement, it's a, a pretty simple ordinance to adopt, but the impact is quite out there, because now you've got to wait on the development community to get interested, and do the math on the requirements that they might have to meet, and have it pass the cash flow test. Anticipated impact, you know, just a, a very conservative estimate of what might be, four hundred units, if, if it really redeveloped fully. No preservation necessarily. Challenges, developer interest, adjacent property acceptance, that's always going to be an issue with affordable housing opportunities, community acceptance, commercial demand, is there really going to be the demand for mixed use on Capital Landing Road? It's a very different mindset from what it is now. And then, the drive for apartment condominiums and market saturation, do we have too many of that particular style of use? Number five, CDBG rehab grants, and this transitions a little bit from building a product to preserving product. So the idea here is, there's a host of neighborhoods that do offer some affordable housing in one or more of the categories that we showed you at the beginning. And as those product, as those houses get older, and the residents get older, it's harder for them to stay there without making investment. And if we can offer them a grant opportunity to fix the issues that would force them to move out, ADA, accessibility, larger bathrooms, walk-in showers, those kinds of things, also addressing the major upkeep issues of safe, warm, and dry, maybe some aesthetic stuff too, then we can require them to commit to some degree of affordability for some period of time. And what that does is it preserves that affordable housing unit into the future. And so that's a, a very sound program, it's used all over the country. We are not a CDBG entitlement community, and that's one of the things that makes this hard. So under challenges, number one is competitive grant. We would have to write this grant every year, and apply for it, and be successful in a very competitive process. I think that we would do pretty well, because Williamsburg does not have a history of applying for this particular type of grant. And so I think at least in the first couple of years, we would benefit from, we've not given the money to Williamsburg in a long time, maybe it's time to do this again. We did do this, I think, on Braxton Court in the past, so it's, it's been a while. Implementation, pre-work is five years, that's assuming that it takes us a while to actually get approved, because, you know, you submit the application, they do the grant review, you get denied, you ask them why, and you address that, and you apply again, it's iterative process. So five years to maybe go through that process and finally get awarded the grant, and then six years to see the impact. Anticipated impact, if you look at all those neighborhoods that we thought were good candidates, maybe a hundred and forty-seven units. Now that's extremely optimistic, because there will certainly be plenty of people that don't see this as a benefit to them. If you are the last of your family, and you are older, and you're living in this house, you may see that home as a nest egg, right? You're going to, when you get old enough, you're going to sell it, you're going to take that money and go to a house that's much more to your liking. Maybe it's in Florida, who knows? And so you're not going to be real excited about having to sign some kind of deed restriction or commitment for affordability. And that's really where this program becomes difficult in terms of getting a hundred percent participation. So challenges include competitive grant, willing homeowners, as I just talked about, requiring the grant approvals, or recurring, every year we'd have to apply again if we wanted to keep offering the money. And in the most, for the most part, CDBG grants don't address exterior issues. So paint and things like that, that's not something CDBG does, it really focuses on safe, warm, and dry. And then our capacity to administer the grant program has to be factored into that too. So those are the five ideas that they wanted to focus on, that got the most of the votes. And then we get to the additional concepts. And again, as I say, these are not bad ideas, these are used, in many cases, all over the country. Some of them are sort of new, but a lot of them are not new, and have been used for a long time, very successfully. So, we don't want to give the impression that these have lesser value, or shouldn't be considered. The first one is inclusionary zoning. So, you know, if you, if you Google affordable housing, probably the first couple of links are going to be about inclusionary zoning. And this is the most-used tool to address affordable housing in a community that's seen growth. What it is, is some level of requiring or asking for developers to volunteer an affordable housing component of a redevelopment plan. Usually, it's some percentage of the overall number of units have to be a level of affordability that the community decides to, in, on advance. That can be voluntary, it can be required, all different ways to get there, but ultimately the result is the same. When you approve a new plan, there's some percentage of units that are affordable. And so we saw that recently with the Governor's End Project, a good example of voluntary inclusionary housing. Number seven, two-story development requirement, this is sort of a, 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 a moving forward of the mixed-use, mixed-income plan for Capital Landing Road. I did talk a lot about two-story development there, and that's my fault, but there are examples of doing single-story, mixed-use, mixed-income also. So there wouldn't be that requirement in that Capital Landing Road initiative, there could be, but there's not in the design of the work group. This would be another layer to get to higher densities. Number eight is soft density, so that's a relatively new planning term, very prominent in the Charlottesville Plan. If you, if you Google it, what you will find about the Charlottesville Plan that was most controversial was this particular initiative. So what this does is, this is considered an equity strategy, it's, it's a tool to address redlining. And what you do is, you basically say, there is no more single-family exclusionary zoning in the city. All of those single-family exclusionary zones now allow at least duplexes. That's what you do. And so as you can imagine, lots of neighborhoods don't like that idea. There are plenty of neighborhoods in Williamsburg already that think they have too much density, and they're not going to be excited about adding more. So, that one would be probably fairly controversial if we tried to roll it out. Number nine, affordable accessory units, another very good idea, you've got an existing property, maybe there's a detached garage, maybe there's enough space upstairs that there could be an apartment. Currently, that's not allowed in our zoning text, right? There is a way to allow that upstairs to be converted to an apartment of some kind. There's all kinds of ways to do that, that would apply protections, owner occupancy, and all that kind of thing. But ultimately, this adds density in the same way that soft density does. And so those same neighborhoods that don't want more density probably aren't going to like this idea either, regardless of what level of protections we can think of or put in place. Number ten is community land trust, another great idea, difficult to execute, slow to see the return. So the community land trust idea there is, you, you find a cache of money, you deploy a cache of money that's designed to buy land. So when a property comes on the market, that land trust buys the whole thing, house and land, then they sell just the house and own the land. And the idea is that, A, keeps it affordable for perpetuity, and B, reduces the overall cost of initial investment for the homeowner, because now they don't have to worry about the cost of the land. So you've reduced it by some portion. In communities where they have done this, it's worked really well, it's just really slow, because you've got to wait on those properties that are key to come available, then you have to purchase them, you have to maintain them, and you have to have a renewable source of funding, because it doesn't exactly build back. So it's, it's difficult to see that one forward if you don't have a really strong private investment network. Number eleven, impact linkage fees. Now this is, combining this idea with a lot of these other ideas that require funding is a vehicle to solve the funding problem. And this is a tool that's used all over the country, it's exceptionally prominent in Florida. And the idea here is that you basically, you impose a fee on a building permit, every building permit of a particular type, to address affordable housing issues. And so it's a dollar, it's two dollars, and over time, that money builds, and suddenly you've got a war chest of funding to deploy in one of these avenues it already has, that needs money. Linkage fees, the difference there is, impact fees are traditionally imposed on residential permits, and linkage fees are imposed traditionally on commercial projects. Number twelve is a PPP loan consortium, so that's a public-private partnership loan consortium, very simple concept, you get some folks together who are like-minded, you invest a little bit of government money, you invest a little bit of private money, and you've got a consortium of funds that could be used to loan out for reducing the cost of affordable housing entry, or in funding one of these other affordable housing development ideas. The trouble there is making sure that that fund renews often enough, that the consortium can continue to make investments, so that the impact isn't quite as long as a community land trust. And finally, number thirteen, Women and Mary assisted employee housing. And that's, you know, just straight out of the Charlottesville Plan. If you do any research at all on what's happening in Charlottesville with affordable housing, you will find that the University of Virginia has adopted a good and great philosophy for operating the university. And what that really means is, we're going to be a great university academically, and we're going to be a good neighbor, acknowledging our impact on the community that is Charlottesville. And so what they say is, that impact includes certainly a driver for affordable housing, we need to be building it too. And so they've committed to a thousand or so units of new affordable housing in the next few years. And so we would encourage Women and Mary to consider a similar strategy, and help us maybe not build their own affordable housing development, but maybe consider casting some funding toward some of these other ideas that would accomplish the same goal. And those are the thirteen strategies. We finish up with the final thoughts, just sort of wrapping up what we think the city council should do with the work, work group recommendations. How does this apply regionally? Obviously, it's a fairly simple statement. If you take any of these concepts and extract them out of just the city of Williamsburg's jurisdiction, and apply them regionally, the impact that's forecasted is multiplied. But it would require substantial buy-in by other communities, obviously. And that's it.
Thank you very much, that was an excellent, excellent overview, excellent presentation. I think this report, as you said, is great, a great toolkit, and it's a good blueprint for future report-outs for work groups. I think it's an excellent, excellent job, and saves, saved this commission from a lot of the work that we were thinking we might have to do, not knowing what was in this report. Our, our next item on the agenda is a discussion, and I'd like, we don't want to get too far into the weeds on this, but I'm sure there, there, there are questions that, since we have a, a captive expert behind the microphone.
I don't know that I would use the term expert so loosely.
Oh, I'd use it, but, you know.
Shellif here, and she's a certified planner, so she can help us.
Well, in, in any event, we have a, we have a discussion, this is an opportunity to ask any of those questions that, that, that you might have.
I did, I'm sorry, I did have one question. I didn't really understand what you were talking about with respect to the redevelopment of the blatant area and the HUD requirements.
So, long ago, in a galaxy far, far away, there was, the city used HUD money to build the blatant building. And when you do that, you're committing long-term to HUD requirements. Every year that the city takes HUD money for anything, extends the term on those requirements. And so the conversation that we've been having with city council and with the authority board is- board is, at what point do we want to say, we're done? And what that means is financially, we've got to make up the difference for the money that we get from HUD. Mr. Franklin estimates that's in the neighborhood of $500,000 to $700,000 a year, seems like a lot of money, but when you're talking about a city budget of over $60 million, that's not a huge sum. I think we could get there, it won't be this year. But the city council and the authority board both said, yes, that's where we'd like to go. And I think what that does is it starts a timeline where we can get out from under those restrictions and be much more free to do what we would like to do with what is the blatant property as a whole. Does that help?
Yeah, that makes sense, thanks.
Nope, no questions.
Yeah, but this is one of those projects that, you know, it's easy to sit around, drink coffee and say, this is what we need to do, until you dig down into the weeds, and it's a lot more challenging than it would appear. You know, we have limited inventory, limited land, costs associated with all this, as you pointed out, a regional issue. You know, for me, the hotel conversion seems like the quickest way, and it's not only in the city, but we have close by neighboring us with other products that could use that. So I guess my question to that would be, with the regional effort, has that process started, or what would the plan be to sort of incorporate York County, James City County into that discussion?
That's an excellent question, Richard Harley, and I want to answer it. But to do so, I want to point something out that you sort of alluded to, that I failed to mention. So if you look at this, back at this list of need, if you total up those number of units, it's pretty significant. At the top, it says 1,247 today, it says it twice, we should have fixed that, but we didn't. And then by 2040, 1640 units, right? So then if you go through these recommendations, I'm sorry if I'm giving you motion sickness, you don't get anywhere near those numbers, right? I mean, even if we did them all, you're still far short of what could be. And so the point there is, we really cannot address this, even our issue, unless it's a regional solution. So the work group in a first design of the report really wanted, there were four quadrants to the circle around execution, and one of them was regional. And in that quadrant, we were supposed to talk about, how does this work regionally, and how could we get there? And when we showed them drafts of some pages, that regional language really read the same. I mean, I was as creative as I could be to change words so that they were different, but ultimately it was the same. And, you know, I think my answer to your question, I think, is it's going to be very hard to do a regional solution. Example I will give you is just recently at the CAO meeting for the Planning Districts, so it was 19 different jurisdictions that participate in that, and usually fairly decent attendance. And at this particular meeting, it was a full house. We met down in Suffolk, and on the table was the recommendation by one of the, if it was a council member in one of the jurisdictions, or if it was an actual member of the Planning District Commission, wanted us to talk about regional approaches to affordable housing. And we spent probably two hours talking about it. And I had, we had just finished this plan, and so the director asked me to talk about our plan and our experience and what I thought about a regional solution. And I did that, and then they came back to me for my thoughts on regional approach. And it was clear from the room, every single community is in a very different place in terms of their acceptance that affordable housing is A, a need, and B, not a bad thing. And I think we need to just be real and not tiptoe around that concept, right? Not in my backyard is a very real thing. And it's real easy, as you say, to drink coffee and say, those people with their not-in-the-backyard mentalities are bad, but when it's your backyard, you feel a little differently. And so just going around the room of those 19 jurisdictions, it was all over the map. And so just think about York County specifically, they've got a very strong anti-growth coalition that has built in as a result of Fenton Mill rezoning. They're not going to like any new development of this type of density, and the only way to make affordable housing work is with density. That's the only way that it works from a private developer's standpoint. Mr. Kell can speak to that better than anybody, probably. So I think regional approaches are great, but they're going to be very hard to accomplish. Even in James City County, if you flip back through recent articles about proposed affordable housing, you can find approved here, denied there, approved here, denied there. And there really isn't a great rationale for why it was okay over here but not okay over there, other than this group was better about advocating against it. So I think there's a lot of challenges there.
I do have a question. What's the consequence of not doing anything substantial, or not doing anything at all?
Status quo. I mean, I think that the numbers and the need categories just continue to grow, but I don't think it means, I don't think it means significant impact in our time, right? I mean, I worked in Monroe County, Florida, Florida Keys, had this problem way worse than the city of Williamsburg does. All of our employees, pretty much in the service sector, drove down from Miami-Dade County. If you worked in QS, that's a four-hour drive. Almost all of our firefighters were not residents of the county. Reason it worked, because they had 24-hour shifts, so they could live in Miami-Dade and come and stay. We addressed affordable housing, we had great partnerships with private developers, and even there, it was a very slow slog, because you can't address the bottom end without heavy government subsidy, and the higher-end stuff just barely scrapes the door of what most people consider to be affordable. You just experienced that with the Governor's End. So what we ended up building the most of was workforce housing, teachers, police officers, those types of folks. And those projects were very successful. Unfortunately, that requires land, which we don't also have. So I think in terms of impact of not doing anything, we see more and more people living outside the city and working in the city. And we don't address what I think is the vision of what the city wanted to be in 2040. And I think we have it here in the report to remind everybody, we just redid this vision statement. One Williamsburg that is courageously leading, innovating a modern city, prioritizing safety and wellness, engaging with our partners while connecting with the world. Each one of those little segments corresponds to a goal that drives deeper into, what does it mean to courageously lead? What does it mean to be one Williamsburg? And almost every single one of them talks about the need for affordable housing. And the reason that's important is because the most successful communities in the world are the ones that are diverse, not just in race, but in income too. And I think for us to think about succeeding in the future, we got to mirror what's successful.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question as well, regarding page seven, I was just wondering how demand is defined on that graphic, whether it's strictly like the numbers of each category that aren't living in, you know, that price range, or is it actually reflective of what one would assume demand to be? This is a difficult question to phrase, I'll kind of give an example. If you were in a higher wage category, you might have a personal preference to desire a house that's below, you know, the maximum affordable thing that's accounted for here, and perhaps then that demand would then be shifted higher. Does that account for this here, or is it strictly?
Preference is not a factor. So in this, what, and I wish Ms. Stafford were here to answer some of these questions, but what she did in this analysis was simply look at how many earners are in the community at that level, and what does that translate in terms of housing acquisition price? That's all that was done. And it also considered, if you read the text, it talks a lot about cost burden, so it also included the cost burden categories.
Got it, thank you, and I can reach out to her on campus as well.
And the reason cost burden is important for the health of the community, I think this maybe goes to your question a little bit, Mr. Granger, is expendable income. You know, you want people to be able to afford things beyond just living. And if they're spending so much of their income on housing, there's not that opportunity. And so cost burden is a category that we really need to be focused on, too, it's not just the people that don't have housing.
Let me ask a data question, and Dr. Stafford probably has this answer, but maybe you may not. Of the 90% who travel in, what's the median distance that they're traveling? I mean, are they coming from James City and York, in which case I don't see a problem? Or are they coming from Short Pump, are they coming from Seattle? What's, you know, what are we, what's, what exactly, how are we defining, you know, that need with regard to that particular?
Yes, that answer is in the full report. The first draft of this, on this page where I have these graphs here, was actually that drive-in map that you're asking about. And it's a very clever way that she's done to illustrate where are people coming from. We can get you that, to show it to you. I don't want to guess where the majority were, because I just don't remember.
Okay, good, as long as we have access to that.
I want to, I mean, okay, I'll guess. You got it, I think it's James City County, which we probably wouldn't be very surprised about.
So, trying to read this small little screen, there's a cute. James City has the highest percentage at 30%, Newport News is second with 12%. And then you see there's York.
Gloucester, Virginia Beach, Hampton, and then other locations.
And we can, I can screenshot this.
But we have firemen right now in the city of Williamsburg that live in Matthews, I mean.
Yes, yeah, and there's.
Middlesex County.
There's, yeah, and there's distinctions between, you know, the farther you go, you've got bridges and ferries, I know a lot of people work in Surrey and all that, or live in Surrey, so.
Mr. Franklin.
That's a, that's a, well, yeah, yeah, exactly. Surrey, bring back the Surrey house.
He's really hoping this meeting ends so he can catch the ferry.
I'm through asking questions, anybody else?
All right, thank you very much. Yeah, my pleasure.
Appreciate it. Feel free to reach out with more questions as we move forward this year. I know, as I said, we're going to be running into some of these, or they're going to be running into us. That will close our discussion, we have an open forum. Next on the agenda, I have one speaker card, Ted Maslin.
Thanks, good afternoon. I'd like to thank the chair for inviting me to share some thoughts, which the Planning Commission may wish to consider when developing its recommendations related to two of the affordable housing initiatives. One is on the top five list, and the other is the lower eight list. And my colleague Caleb Rogers and I have been discussing about the hotel conversions and the ADUs. Regarding hotel conversions to apartments, we have seen two successful projects which have delivered additional workforce housing to our community. Now, one was the Flats, and the other one was Willow Creek that we saw in the report there. Additional projects will be encouraged by eliminating the current cap in the ordinance. This would also be an opportunity for the planning commissioners to review and update the criteria for conversion project approval. And that criteria could also be expanded to include, you know, affordability provisions. My assumption is that there may be two or three hotels that could be considering that right now. At the same time, as outdated hotel stock is removed from the city, it is important that the planning and economic development groups work together to launch a program which will attract new hotels to the city. Did you know that the last new hotel in Williamsburg was built 16 years ago, in 2006? Wouldn't it be great to encourage a boutique hotel to be located within walking distance of William &amp; Mary? Regarding ADUs, I offered to start a green paper to jumpstart further action on this. And the outline begins by saying, what is an accessory dwelling unit or ADU, and why are they gaining popularity elsewhere? And then B, who benefits from introducing ADUs to Williamsburg? C, what experience do other communities have with ADUs? And D, what might a draft ADU zoning ordinance address? And those factors might include, one, a voluntary program with a property owner agreeing to covenants in return for the city allowing an ADU within his or her single-family's own parcel. For example, restricted to owner-occupied parcels with a limit of two non-related parties living there. Two, a minimum lot size. Three, flexibility for minimum setbacks under certain circumstances. Four, requirements for off-street parking based on occupancy. And then five, we know that homeowner associations would have control in their neighborhoods. From a legal standpoint, what recourse is available if the covenant is violated? So looking at some information from the American Planning Association, we can start to flush out some of the factors related to the first two questions. So the American Planning Association discusses ADUs. An accessory dwelling unit is a smaller, independent residential dwelling unit located on the same lot as a standalone, single-family home. ADUs have the potential to increase housing affordability, both for the homeowners and the tenants, create a wider range of housing options within the community, enable seniors to stay near family as they age, and facilitate better use of the existing housing fabric in established neighborhoods. Consequently, many cities and counties have signaled support for ADUs in their plans and adopted zoning regulations that permit ADUs in low-density residential areas. And we see that several states have enacted legislation allowing ADUs by right throughout their state. Benefits to society outlined by one state include, A, increasing the supply of affordable housing without the need for more infrastructure or further land development. B, benefits for aging homeowners, single parents, recent college graduates who are saddled with significant student loan debt, caregivers and disabled people. C, integrating affordable housing into the community with minimal negative impact. And D, providing elderly citizens with the opportunity to live in a supportive family environment with both independence and dignity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maslin. This is an open forum, would anyone else like to address the commission at this time? Again, no mad rush to the podium. Anything else from staff that we need to know about?
No, this was as a request of the Planning Commission, and I think we'll be seeing some of these come up in the not-so-distant future.
I think so, too, and hopefully we'll remember all of these details, if not, we know where to look for the information.
We may be able to tick a few of our recommendation boxes from the comp plan when we move forward, so.
Exactly, exactly.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say thank you for the opportunity to come and talk to you today. Please don't hesitate to make the request for me to come back when there's an issue you want to know more about. Very often, I'm focused on the city council and making sure that I'm meeting their needs, and it's not intentional that I neglect the Planning Commission. Being a certified planner, I very much enjoy being back in the old house, so.
Well, I don't think we feel neglected, but we appreciate, we appreciate being remembered, and we appreciate the information. So with that, we are adjourned.